Okay, good evening, everyone. The appointed time has arrived. I would like to welcome you all to the council meeting for mayor and council here in Villarica. It's March 26, 2019. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:00 P.M. First order of business is our invocation given by council member Leslie McPherson, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I'll just mention briefly before I begin, you'll see on your agenda it was supposed to be Danny Carter. His mother had a bad fall, and he's where he needs to be tonight, and that's with family. So, if you'll remember them in prayer. Lord, we thank you for this evening. We thank you even for the sunshine we've enjoyed part of the day. We thank you for the opportunity we have to have representative government, for the people that took out of their time to be here. Lord, help us to be transparent, help us to be honest in our dealings, and just that you would bless the city of Villarica. Lord, I ask especially for the Carter family, for Danny and Linda and his mother, that you would just watch over them, help the doctors to give good treatment to his mother, and just comfort them during this difficult time. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, first of all, I'll lead off. We have a officer, we've got a couple of ceremonial presentations, but I would like to welcome our newest council member, council member Matthew Montahan for Ward Two. Welcome to the rest of us, and we look forward to big things.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a couple of ceremonial presentations tonight. Our first one is the Officer of the Quarter, and I believe Captain Parker, are you going to be handling that one? Chief, I couldn't see you.
Not bright enough? It's not purple. Good evening, evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate you allowing me to present this tonight. We partnered with O'Charley's. Come on up.
Hello, Brian.
This is Brian. He's the manager of O'Charley's. And Brian came to us and said he wants to honor officers that have done something special or doing a good job or something like that, and so we decided to do Officer of the Quarter when we honor a specific officer for doing something special. So, tonight, we're going to be honoring Officer Rohan Rowan. Chris has been with us. He started on night shift. He served in the Navy before that. Can y'all hear me or not? Do you hear me?
Well, the recording.
Right. Is that better, worse? Okay. So, Chris was in the Navy from '93 to 2013. He retired in 2013 with the rank of Chief Petty Officer. We hired him in 2013, July. He started on night shift, became one of the stars of the shift. The officers really thought a lot of him, enjoyed working with him. He became a SRO February 2015 at Glanton Hinesman. It's kind of funny, because every time I go to Glanton Hinesman, the principal will look at me, and she said, "You're not getting Chris. You're not moving Chris. You're not..." I said, "No, ma'am, we're not." But he's just so well thought of there. We've got a lot of pictures of him with the kids and on the floor, talking to them and working with them. Just, they love him over there and think a lot of him, and we appreciate that. He's also the co-coordinator for the Villarica PD Explorers with Michelle Moore, Sergeant Moore, and just do an awesome job with that. They've been to several competitions and just done super, and we appreciate, we're very proud of them. He also helps in other events, bicycle patrols, city court. He always helps represent us at the job fairs. He just goes above and beyond. He's always got a positive attitude, very professional, represents us well. So, I'd like to recognize Chris Rowan.
Now, how do we stand? I don't want to get in trouble, Chris. Okay, and Chris, if you would like Shauna and your family come up and y'all get some pictures. I know they were excited about coming up here. I know one of them wanted to give a speech. I don't know which. And Brian, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, sure. Congratulations, Chris. We've been a part of the community for 12 years in April. Villarica Police Department's been very supportive of us, and we wanted to do something for the police department, and this is our way of giving back. We love to be a part of this community. It's been a blessing to be here, and we're glad to help in any way we can. But I'm not sure if you like apple pie. You can trade it out for something else if you want, and bring your family in for dinner.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, sir.
Brian, is this Free Pie Tuesday now, or?
No, still tomorrow.
Okay.
It's all you can eat chicken dinners.
Good to see you, Brian.
Hey, Brian.
For those of you that don't know, Brian's face, if you go to any of the events at Villarica High School, I'm going to plug in for O'Charley's. They do a tremendous job in our community, not just with our police department, which they do a tremendous job with, but with our football teams, baseball teams, and all the teams really at the high school, and all the schools in Villarica. So, Brian, thank you, and please pass that along to Corbett. Take it. Okay, our next presentation is for the U.S. Census Bureau, and that Ms. Mona Shorter, recruiter, please come forward.
Like I said, my name is Mona Shorter. I'm here with the U.S. Census, and we just want to make the community know that we are hiring in this area. There are several positions that we have available. We have recruiters, which what I do, we have clerks, and we open an office in Douglasville, and we have several positions that will be opened up there. The starting pay, which everybody wants to know about, is $17 an hour, capping off at $24. I think it's $24.50. Let me see. $27.50, I'm sorry. Capped off at $27.50, and I just have a, just a few questions that a lot of people ask us. Before I do that, I just want to connect with, if you know anybody that's interested, I would like to connect with any nonprofit or for-profit with the information session, because a lot of people don't know about the census and what we stand for, and they just get it confused with just census taking. That's not what it's all about, because in this season, we're not doing census taking at all. We're doing listing and other job opportunities. We're laying the foundation for census, which is going to be held in 2020. So, can I go over the questions real quick, or do I have a minute? Okay. Some of the questions that are asked are, where will I be working? You will be working in your community, and what benefit it is. It's supporting your community. It's great pay, flexible hours. You get to make your own schedule. You get paid every week, and you get paid for training. What are requirements? You have to be a U.S. citizen, 18 years or older. Let's see. And there's some other things. One of the things that we're asked, you get paid for mileage also, 58 cents a mile, and you can go to our website, 2020census/jobs, to apply. But I'm going to stay around to the end of the thing if anybody have any questions, and I have flyers and cards for you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, our next order of business is adoption of the agenda. Council members, you have the agenda before you, and do I hear any changes to the printed agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
A motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Absent.
Okay. All right. We have three, three and one abstention. We have reached the public comment portion of our meeting. Anyone wishing to give public comment, please do so at this time. State your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Wesley Whiteener, 635 South Street, Apartment 8, Villarica, Georgia. I asked, the first time that I went and came to the city council meeting about tiny homes, the question that I want to ask now is, how can I go and change the rules and regulations on the size of a property for tiny homes? From 10,000 to, I said 10 acres, down to no limitations on property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Dr. Bernice Brooks, 130 Red Branch Drive, Villarica. I'm here to requesting writing a period of time for the Carroll County Outreach Ministries to remove all of the content of the Head Start Facility on Clickon Street. The rationale for that is, the volunteers will assist, who will assist with the effort, work full-time jobs, and will only be able to assist me on the weekends and nights. The plan is to procure liability insurance, electricity, water, and sewer, and also this period of time will allow me to raise funds to remove the building, the actual structure. I thank you for listening, and I hope you can accommodate my request.
Thank you, ma'am.
Michael Young, 9634 Coastal Point Drive, Villarica. Mayor and council members, the Villarica Development Authority has a sitting council member as part of the voting authority. It's Danny Carter right now. The Downtown Development Authority does not. I would recommend or encourage you to examine that and see about appointing one of the city council members to the Downtown Development Authority. We do a lot of, a lot of things for the city, and having some, on, having a city council member as a voting member of that authority would provide some necessary oversight, I think. And if you don't do that, then we're going to lose Matthew, because he's on the Downtown Development Authority until he swears into the city council.
Yeah, and Mayor, just to follow up on that, I did look at the statute, because that question came to me, and it is permissible for the city council to appoint one member on the city council to be on the DDA.
As a voting member?
As a voting member, much like the Development Authority, which can have one member who's on the city council. The DDA can also have one voting member who is on the city council. Councilman Montahan was on the DDA. I think that probably officially went off when he got sworn in tonight, but he is eligible to be reappointed for that position.
Okay. That's certainly something to consider. Thank you, David.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Thomas Flowers. I live at 3107 Golfer's Way in Villarica. I'm here to speak tonight in favor of financial prudence and setting of priorities in relation to financial needs. I'm an old retired banker, and so anything financial always catches my attention. And I know there's been some discussion recently, been to most of the meetings, where there've been discussions about the cost of entertainment at some of the venues during the special events, and the amount of money that you spend for that sort of thing. And so I just wanted to reiterate, I think I've said this once previously, but that I fully support a strategic plan and that's based on a needs assessment, where you look at all of the needs of the city, and you take care of the things that are needed and must be had before we do anything that is just nice to have. I would recommend a needs assessment and a prioritization of spending based on those needs. And of course, I always think police, fire, emergency services, water, sewer, roads, streets, that sort of thing takes precedence over everything else. And I'm not a long-term resident of Villarica. I've only been here about six years now, seven years. But there are some issues, as all of you know, with the infrastructure, that have been issues for three decades. And so that means people have just been passing on those deficiencies from one council to another, on down the line. So, my concern is that we take care of our needs prudently, and that when it comes to things that are nice to have, we pay for those or schedule those when we have funds available over and above the things that we need to pay for. I lived in Kansas City for a time. Emmanuel Cleaver was the mayor at part of the time when I was there, and people were proposing a downtown trolley system, something they said, "Oh, it's going to look great, you know, it'll do the night downtown," and the Plaza, which was a special place there. And Mayor Cleaver vetoed that, and he said, "It's just touristy frou-frou. We've got a lot of other things we need to spend our money on before we put in a trolley." And I tell you, he really earned my respect for that. Today, he's a congressman in Washington, representing the people of western Missouri right there, and I think his financial leadership was part of the reason he was taken so seriously. And that's all I had to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Karen Grace, 121 Chadwick Place, Villarica, and I was here just to speak about what that gentleman just spoke about. It was just brought to my attention, the money being spent on bands for summer concerts and whatnot, and I was just here to let you know about, also the concern about frivolous spending, not to take away from all of the wonderful things that happen here in Villarica. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Prissy Sullivan, and I'm at 207 North Avenue here in Villarica. I just wanted to point out, and I'm sure that some of you know it, when you set the budget and you give a department head a budget, it looks to me like as long as they are spending within that budget, then you really shouldn't have any further say-so. In fact, I don't even know why they bring everything up here for anything other than an information item. Now, when it rolls around next time and you're working on the budget, then you consider all this. Do we really want a band that costs that much or not? And you adjust that department's budget accordingly, but it wastes their time to have to come up here and beg for the money and present it and work through it, and then it leaves the bands hanging, it leaves the entertainment hanging, it makes us look inefficient because we've left them hanging. And if they're going to have to do that every time, then you don't need the department head. Y'all just do it. I mean, simple enough. You don't need two people doing the same thing. The second thing I wanted to tell you, I have a vested interest in Villarica High School, because I feel that as that high school goes, so do my property values, not to mention that I have two children that graduated there and one daughter that still teaches there. Ms. Brooks has informed me that I'm late knowing this, but they just told me yesterday, the academic decathlon team, which Villarica High School has the only academic decathlon team in the county, placed first in the state of Georgia, and will be going to national competition. Now, for those of you who don't have real tight pockets, they are also trying to raise $8,500 to go. The county office is giving them nothing to go. My personal opinion is because there's not a ball involved, but that's just a personal opinion. So, anyway, if you would pass that along, and it could be made to the VRHS Academic Decathlon Team, and I'm going to try to get them up here next time. So, they've done real well, and like I said, they are the only one in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Carolyn Cox, 2860 East Highway 166, Carrollton, Georgia. Hello. Does $90,000, will it fix our infrastructure? Will $90,000 help our downtown establishment? I think so. I am a part of the Main Street Board. I do it voluntarily. I think my time is worth my vote, and if the $90,000 will fix our infrastructure, I say take it. But if it's only going to patch it, then allow us to do something for downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay, see.
All right. I won't step down here, but I'd just like to say something. Yesterday, a gentleman came to my house. He had a serious problem. I didn't know. Yeah, he had a serious problem. He wanted to know how to fix it. I didn't know. He went to the city. The city doesn't go on private property, which was okay, but they told him where to go. He went, he got, well, a nasty thing, to be exact. But anyway, I took it upon myself to, I believe in giving flowers before they die. But anyway, I took it upon myself to call that man sitting over there on the end after hours, after hours now. He had to, he said, "Well, give me, I'll call the man and see if I can work something out." I don't know if he did or no, but anyway, he went to DDA meeting, got on me, because I didn't go. But anyway, and he went to the gym. When I know anything, that man was calling me on my phone. He was in my yard. This was a nasty job. Nobody in this room would do it. I know this. He took time out to, off his schedule, to do something that, like I said, and if you want me to tell you what it was, I'll tell you. But anyway, it was something above and beyond what anybody in here would do, and he did it. And I think he is one of the best employees here. That's me now, because of what he did. He did not have to do it, and like I said, it was after hours, and he did something that the people that should have did it wouldn't do, and I give my kudos to Mr. Tom Bob. That's it. He's going to get me for that, but I don't care.
With Matt right there, I can no longer see Tom. I was trying to see his, I was trying to see his face.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate that. You're a good example for our employees. I appreciate that.
He was going to let the man do it, but he did it himself, so.
Okay, council updates. I'll start this one off, just to announce, most of you have seen this that are on my Facebook page, but I am a grandfather once again. My daughter gave birth to her third grand, my third granddaughter from Kim, my daughter, and her name is Leila Joy Seymour, and she was, thank you, weighed six pounds, seven ounces. She's very healthy and should be going home here in about an hour, so mama and baby are all fine, and daddy is surviving, so. Thank you all for your, for your kind words on Facebook. I appreciate it. Other council updates.
I got one. First of all, Punkin Town Road. If you haven't driven down it since yesterday, the new striping, the raised pavement markers in the middle, it's much safer. You can see where the lanes in, because you know how Punkin Town, it has no, no margin whatsoever. There's a line, and you're off the road, and just appreciate staff getting that done and everything else. It'll make a big difference over there, especially when it's raining. And lastly, I, sometimes I come across stuff just when I'm reading the paper and all. So, I'm reading about this business that does AGW ice cream. I'm not specifically plugging them, but they have a business down in Carrollton. It's doing quite well, and it's owned by Mitch and Amber White. So, I'm just reading through it, right, and I find out that they might be thinking about wanting to find another location, and they mentioned Temple, and they mentioned Bowden, and so my word is, whoever's in charge of going out and recruiting, talk to these people. Maybe they'll want to expand here in Villarica. So, anyway, I just came across that while I was reading. I thought, who knows? Maybe we can talk them into coming here. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we will close that portion of the meeting and move on to Tab B, governing body. The first one is an oath of office for Ms. Stephanie Baldi to our library advisory board. So, is Ms. Ms. Baldi, first, before I issue the oath of office, thank you for agreeing to serve on our board. Our boards are the backbone, really, of our city. They're our connection between our elected officials and our residents, so thank you for your commitment to serve. So, I'm going to, I'm going to read the oath of office, and then after that, if you would just signify by saying I do or I will, just raise your right hand. I, Stephanie Baldi, do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties as an appointed board member of the library advisory board. I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States or any state, or any foreign state which I may by the laws of the state of Georgia and prohibited from holding. I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. I will perform the duties of my office in the best interest of the city of Villarica to the best of my ability without fear, favor, affection, reward, or expectation thereof. Congratulations, ma'am. Sign. Just sign right here, ma'am. This is saying you'll commit the rest of your life to... We've all learned to kind of part up here when we sort of have ceremonies. Okay, our next order of business is the approval of the minutes. Council members, you have the agenda, I mean, the minutes from the March 12, 2019 meeting. I would entertain a motion to either amend or approve.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have moved to approve the minutes as written. We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Absent.
Three, one, three, three and one abstention. He didn't vote against. Okay, Tab C, Finance. Sarah?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is our February financial update. All right, so this is, we have a new fiscal year, obviously, um, October through February. So this is the first five months of our two thousand nineteen fiscal year. It's our cash update from February of two thousand eighteen to February of two thousand nineteen. Our total checking accounts have gone from nine million to eleven million. Uh, those first three listed there, they are part of our pooled cash account. So we have one major operating account that we deposit money into and cut checks out of. Um, and the system tracks which fund that is, that money is due to. So our general fund has grown from five point three million to seven point five million this year. Um, I'll say some of that decrease in two thousand eighteen was due to audit entries. Also, we wrote off that outstanding negative balance in our solid waste fund right before that, in December of two thousand seventeen. That was part of it. And we had, two thousand seventeen was the last year that we had supplemented from the general fund to our water sewer fund for the bond payment. So now we've made it a full, over a full year without supplementing the water sewer fund and the solid waste fund. So that's good. Next, our water sewer fund cash has grown significantly as well. Uh, two thousand nineteen is, we had our second re, round of rate increases, so we are seeing increase in our cash from that. Sanitation and solid waste, we are still seeing a slight negative, but after our most recent audit is completed, we, I expect that there will be a slight write-off again from that for the short year, the nine-month year. And hopefully from there, we won't be having any more negative balances in our solid waste fund. Those next three accounts are our SPOST accounts. Two thousand eight SPOST, we are not currently receiving funds from that. However, we still have money in the bank for that that we need to spend. Twenty fifteen Carroll SPOST is current, twenty sixteen Carroll County, or Douglas County SPOST, excuse me, is current. And we have a million in the Carroll County SPOST and almost nine hundred thousand in the Douglas County SPOST. Wanted to show a seven-year cash history. So the big blue section is our total cash. The green lines are our general fund cash, which you just saw on that other screen. The orange is the water sewer cash, and gray, which you can hardly see anywhere, is sanitation. Um, I thought it was interesting, those first few years, the general fund, which is the green line, pretty much matches the blue line. So our general fund cash was pretty much all the cash we had. And then, um, you can see, are y'all not seeing this? Y'all can't see the PowerPoint? Oh, I'm sorry.
Is what you're seeing on the screen different than what we have?
I guess so. Sorry.
Jim.
Oh. Okay, well.
We talked about putting the monitor back there so we can see what you guys are seeing.
Well, let me just say also, the feature that we have that brings that up is also not working tonight, so.
I had to close mine and reopen it, and it came up.
All right, go ahead.
All right. However, uh, cash, from seventeen to nineteen, there is, you're starting to see a difference between the total cash and the general fund cash. So we're actually having cash beyond just general fund, and that's SPOST, that self-funded insurance. So anyway, cash is increasing. I'll get a copy of that to y'all. All right, so back to what you have in front of you. This is our growth screen, shows our building in the past two years, comparing the first five months of the two thousand eighteen period to the first five months of this fiscal year. We've run from sixty-three building permits to eighty-nine building permits this year in new residential construction. Our water and sewer taps are keeping tabs with that as well. Commercial, we've had one so far in the first five months of two thousand nineteen. Okay, business activity, this is our water and sewer net income statement, we'll call it that. Comparing five months, excuse me, five months in the two thousand eighteen period, which wasn't really our fiscal year, but I'm trying to make it a true comparison. So it is five months from December of two thousand seventeen to February of two thousand eighteen, and then December, or, excuse me, October eighteen to February of two thousand nineteen. That miscellaneous revenue you see doesn't include tap fees. But the, the, uh, the revenue increase is nearly seven, seven hundred thousand dollars, and that is after two rate increases. We did have the first round of rate increases in February of two thousand eighteen and the second round in January of two thousand nineteen. So we have had significant revenue increase. And, uh, as I showed last month, we are actually positive. We have net income for the first time since I've been here. Any questions on that? Same thing for sanitation and solid waste. This is after two rate increases have been in place. So we do see a significant revenue increase here. And again, we have our net income. So for the first time, again, as far back as I've looked for sanitation and solid waste, we are actually, we have a net income instead of a net loss. Some other highlights, sales tax revenue, hotel motel tax revenue are both up about fifteen percent from this time last year. And then I also highlighted the Carroll County and Douglas County SPOST numbers. We are seeing, um, significant increase from last year as well. Total number of employees, I think this is just an interesting tidbit. At this point, last year, we had a hundred and forty-seven employees, and now we have a hundred and sixty-three employees. So we're growing. And last, but not least, our self-funded insurance. Total savings in the, uh, time that we've been on the program is six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. And then below that, you'll see the contributions made during the year. So this is the employer and the employee portion. Every payroll, we're moving money to our self-funded bank account. And then I think weekly, the claims are being pulled out by our third-party administrator. So the actual claims to the doctors and to the pharmacies are coming out of our bank account. But in just this fiscal year so far, we've saved a hundred thousand dollars. So total savings, six hundred and sixty-three. Any questions?
I'm not finding it on the dashboard, but the only thing I read a question for is, and now I'm not seeing what I read the question for, water purchases. How are we doing in that area? 'Cause I knew we were doing so much better. We've had so much rain this year, too.
Yes. I took it off.
Or using less.
We have, um, last year was a great year. We had saved a bunch compared to the prior year. Um, the savings aren't as great this year comparatively. I don't wanna say we're spending more, but, um, compared to seventeen, where we were spending a lot on water purchases, it just wasn't as great of a, a ta-da. So I took it off to show you the Carroll County SPOST. So I think it's...
Oh, so I did see it.
Yeah. I decided to highlight something else. Sorry.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
Anything else? The next two items are budget amendments. First one is for two thousand eighteen. We are wrapping up our two thousand eighteen fiscal year. The audit was due to the state March thirty-first. However, I received a call from the auditor yesterday asking us to make a request to the state for an extension. Um, part of our audit, well, one of the things that they're requesting is from our retirement, um, firm, I guess, which is through GMA. It's, we call it GMEBS, um, Georgia Municipal Employee Retirement, something. Benefits System, yes. Um, they do an audit twice a year of the allocations they make to the act, the individuals on the pension plan. They do it twice a year, and depending on when your fiscal year ends determines which audit you fall under. Well, unfortunately, I didn't know that till yesterday. So we should've been under the other audit that would've occurred, that would've lined up with our fiscal year end, now that we've changed. So we are now waiting on that report from GMEBS. So anyway, uh, I did receive a letter from the state today saying that we have been approved for an extension. The auditor didn't think it would be but a few more weeks, but again, we're, now we're waiting on somebody else, so. That's just an update. As part, part of this twenty, twenty eighteen, um, fiscal year-end closeout, I did wanna bring some budget amendments to y'all. Uh, we did budget as best we could with the twenty, with the two thousand eighteen nine-month short year. However, I do not have a crystal ball. If I did, I would be working somewhere else, if at all. So I do have some updates to bring y'all. With that being said, all of these have been offset with either revenue or, of course, or a savings and expense elsewhere. Also, I wanna point out that even though we have some line items that are over budget that need to be addressed, um, our net, our expenditures for two thousand eighteen were actually under budget by a net of about a hundred thousand dollars. So I don't want y'all looking at this thinking we've overspent entire, in our entirety. We have not. But I do wanna fix some of the departments.
Again, this, this was a result of going to a different fiscal year budget. We, we knew that we were gonna have a shortfall because we were working with a nine-month budget, so.
Correct. But also, you know, um, we'll, and we'll get into it, some things I can't predict. For instance, gas prices, and we'll talk about that in a minute. So, uh, the first one is group insurance. The auditors have put an entry on our books for basically the lag of claims that run out, uh, over the three months after the fiscal year. So our books closed on September thirtieth, but we had claims in October, November, and December that occurred before the fiscal year end, but we didn't know about them till after the fiscal year end. So we booked them back to that prior year. So we need to adjust for that, and that's a thirty-five thousand dollar hit. However, we, we were over budget, our revenue was over budget in some, our sales tax, as I've presented over these last few months. So I was able to offset that with, with the sales tax. Next, we had a Douglas County election expense of thirty-three hundred dollars that was not budgeted for. And we had some savings in our attorney's fees, thank you, David, so I was able to offset that with that. The next four items were from the police department. We had overtime that was over by thirty-one thousand, group insurance, twenty-five thousand, workers' comp, twenty-three thousand. The workers' comp was a big hit. We had an audit done throughout, um, I'm not sure at what point during the year, but basically we owed forty-nine thousand more dollars for our workers' comp. And since the police department has so many employees, they were hit more than some of the other departments with that. So twenty-three thousand dollars there. And gasoline was up fifteen thousand dollars over budget. Again, we did have revenue that was over budget, so I was able to offset that as well. Next, we had claims for, medical claims for arrestees. We have seen an increase in these over the last year. Not so much, I think, in the number of claims, but in how they're being dealt with. So we did, we were over budget in that by sixteen thousand dollars. And when I say being dealt with, I'm talking about third parties, not us. Court fines, I was able to offset that again with revenue. Next is for fire. We pay forty percent of our insurance premium tax to, straight to Douglas County, and that covers our fire and EMS protection. Um, our revenue was, was higher than what we budgeted. Well, I think we budgeted nine hundred and thirty-something thousand dollars, and we ended up getting just over a million dollars. So since the revenue was higher, forty percent of that revenue was higher, that went straight to, to Douglas County. So I need to increase our budget for the expense side, and I offset it with the revenue that was also higher. Next, we had an overage in recreation for stolen equipment. That was twenty-five thousand dollars. However, we had insurance proceeds to offset that. Next was weather insurance, again, for recreation. It was higher than what we, what we had budgeted. That was three thousand dollars. And I was able to offset that with the sponsorships that we get for recreation. It's a revenue item. And lastly was an overage in our community development department. We were over by ninety-one thousand dollars due to engineers. We had a GIS consultant through the whole year. The comp plan was a little higher than expected. I was able to offset fifty thousand of that with increased revenue. And the other, we had savings in code enforcement due to, um, dark time not having, we weren't fully staffed, I think, at the, the whole year. We had one employee retire. So we had some savings there. So overall, it's a net, it's a net increase, or, it's a net change of zero dollars, but the expense has increased two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, and the revenue has also increased two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. And then there's a few more on the next page. This is hotel tax revenue, which came in higher than what we expected as well. But with that comes higher expenses, because hotel tax, part of it goes to general fund, part of it goes to our CVB. Uh, part of it's used for product development. So this is the result of increased revenue. So I'm increasing the revenue by thirty-eight thousand dollars, increasing the product development revenue by fifty thousand dollars, and the expense to CVB, thirty-seven thousand, product development expense, nineteen thousand, and then the transfer to general fund by thirty-two thousand. So total expense increase is eighty-eight thousand, and total revenue increase is eighty-eight thousand. Any questions?
Questions with staff? Counsel, you have the proposed motion?
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion, um, but it's gonna be a little different from one that's written because I want it to be specific to the addendum. I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance to approve an amendment, which would be amendment Exhibit A to the budget for the fiscal year two thousand eighteen for the city pursuant to Section two dash seven one of the city charter.
Have a motion to the second. We will now open it for discussion. Seeing no discussion, uh, we'll call a question. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, ma'am.
Next is the two thousand nineteen budget amendments. Trying to bring these to you more regularly so we don't have that big list at the end of the year. Let her bring this up. The city manager asked for the council to approve projects at Pine Mountain Gold Museum. I think not to exceed forty-three thousand five hundred. So this is the budget amendment that corresponds with that. We had budgeted, we knew, um, maintenance was very much needed at Pine Mountain, so we had budgeted quite a bit of maintenance money for his department. So we were able to cover that from the general fund side of his budget. I just have to move it to the correct capital fund for, uh, these projects. So the first one is that forty-three thousand five hundred dollars. We're taking thirteen thousand five hundred from maintenance of buildings and thirty thousand from maintenance of grounds. And if, we'll come back to that next piece in a second. Going down to the next section where it says general fund capital projects, this is where I'm now budgeting the other side of that, is to bring this forty-three thousand five hundred in from general fund to use it for a capital project for Pine Mountain Gold Museum. Same amount, forty-three thousand five hundred. And then we've had a few other things come up from, uh, will you scroll down all the way, Alisa, to, for, again, Pine Mountain Gold Museum? And we had money in Douglas County SPOST to use for that. So we had fifty-six hundred dollars needed for display cases at the museum. And then sixty-one fifty needed for some other improvements. I think this was, what, doors?
The garage.
Doors for the garage at Pine Mountain Gold Museum. This would be to use Douglas County SPOST. Our revenue has come in higher than what we've expected, so this is increasing revenue and then also offsetting that with the expenditure. So that was all Pine Mountain Gold Museum, but if you'll scroll back up, Alisa, sorry. To, all right, so number thirty and number thirty-one under general fund. Last time, at the last meeting, council had asked about transportation study. So this is just a proposal, but we did put in eighty thousand dollars in the budget this year for branding and website. That hadn't been done yet. It was a project we had talked about using the city manager's, um, assistant or additional person for his department. That has, that hasn't occurred yet, so I didn't know if the transportation study was more urgent. We do have eighty thousand dollars available, so that is included on this budget amendment if the council so desires.
Thank you, staff, for, for putting that transportation study in there. I think that's absolutely crucial for this, looking forward in this city, so, thank you.
And, uh, I'm gonna do the same thing with this one, and I, and, and let me just say, I, I do desire to have that, uh, transportation study in there. I think it's crucial for a lot that's going on. So I make a motion to adopt the ordinance to approve an amendment titled Exhibit A to the budget for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen for the city pursuant to Section two dash seven one of the city charter.
Have a motion to the second, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next is a potential contribution to the Carroll County Public Safety Memorial. As I have mentioned so far, our SPOST money is coming in higher than budgeted, so we do have money available there if the council so desires to contribute to Carroll County's project here. Uh, that was presented to us at the March twelfth meeting. I set this up at twenty thousand dollars, um, but whatever the council desires, so. I don't have too much detail on here.
We did get a presentation on this, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, I would like to have some additional discussion, so I would make a motion that we table this until our next meeting. I, I don't know the date, but I think we can do some additional discussion between now and then. Can we get a date? Tom, do you know the date?
April nine is the next meeting.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we table this until April nine, to the, to the, to the April nine council meeting.
Have a motion to the second. Discussion? Not all in favor? It will be on the April ninth meeting. I'm on number five.
Okay, wanted to bring counsel an update on, I put credit card process or update, but I think it's more encompassing than that. So as we've mentioned several times over the past couple of months, the city does absorb all the credit card fees for payments processed at customer service parks, recreation, library, and Pine Mountain. The court passes the fee on to the customer. And, and in February, we did bring a specific vendor to you that the court is already using. However, I was asked to put that out to bid. That has been done now. As I was doing that, I did find that... As I was doing that, I did find that, as I said, it's, it's more encompassing. It's not necessarily a credit card vendor. It's, it's a vendor that handles online payments, having a mobile app to make payments, e-check, IVR, which is interactive voice, I think. I don't remember the R. But that's where you can call in, and you're basically talking to a computer, and it's asking you a question, and you respond, and it's, you can make your payment that way. Or if you're talking to that computer and you want to talk to a person, you can push a button and talk to a person, which is not actually our customer service department. It's this other company that handles some of our payments. So there, it's, it's multifaceted as far as payment types. Additionally, there was some discussion about whether debit card fees were lower than credit card fees. So I looked at what we're actually paying. So like I said, we, for customer service and our community development, community development payments right now, we are paying two companies. It's the credit card processor, which is Chase Payment Tech, Chase Payment Tech, excuse me. So you can see the percentages there that we're paying. Credit card transactions, we pay 1.69% to 2.84%, depending on the card type, plus a 23 cent flat fee for all credit cards. For debit cards, there was still a fee of .18 to .78% plus a 22 cent flat fee. Plus, if you look at the previous column, we pay express bill pay 34 cents for each of those transactions. So again, they are the ones that provide the website. They provide our PCI compliance, which is, that protects us from consumer, I think, consumer information, that sort of thing. Next is toll-free operator assisted transactions. Like I was saying, if they call in and talk to the computer, but they want to talk to a live person, that's 95 cents per transaction. Plus, whether it was a credit card or a debit card up at the top, they get those Chase Payment Tech fees as well. Toll-free IVR transactions, again, that's talking to the computer and taking the automated payment on the phone, is 95 cents per transaction, plus the credit card or debit card fees. We also offer e-check, which is 45 cents flat fee, which, this is again, through express bill pay, and that's where it's drafted from your account. And then we have online bill pay transactions, which I'm thinking this is the, the automatic draft, where it's, um, excuse me, it's automatically set up to take it from your account. That's 20 cents. No, 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 excuse me. I had to get clarification on that. The last one, bill pay, is if you, if you do bill pay from your bank website, and they send a check there. They charge us for that as well, 20 cents. All right, scroll one down, please, Alisa. Recreation, Pine Mountain, library, and court all have different credit card processors. For recreation and Pine Mountain, those are their fees. They're listed. There's still a fee for credit or debit. Their seem to be lower overall. Library uses the square, which has more of a flat fee situation, 2.5 to 3.5%. And then the court, all their fees are charged to the customers. So additionally, a question, question came up about ACH, whether we could do that as a free option for our customers. I did reach out to our bank, and they said we were set up and we were able to do that. So we do have that ability to draft from customers' accounts. The customer won't have to sign up for it, and it wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to pick and choose what amount. It would be the amount due, which if you're, if we're drafting every month, that shouldn't be a problem unless you had a leak, you know, something out of the ordinary were to happen. But we, we could deal with that. Additionally, I contacted our software company to see if that was possible. So basically, the software, once a month, once we know which customers want their accounts drafted, the software would produce a list. That's what would be uploaded to the bank, and that's what would initiate these transactions. So again, we, it looks like we do have a free option for customers. That won't be any fee to us, and won't be a fee to the customer. So again, this is just an update to y'all. There is an RFP out there. It'll close April 30th, and we should have, we'll be bringing that to the May 14th meeting for the council to decide on that.
Thank you, Sarah, for that update. Okay. Tab D, community development. Bobby?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm on the public work side with this one tonight. This item is a proposal from CCR Environmental, Inc. They perform, they have performed our, our water quality testing and reporting for us for the last three or four years to comply with the Georgia Water Quality Control Act that we've been a part of, and had to implement our watershed protection plan since 2011. This is not a sole source vendor or consultant, but they have, they've done our sampling and our reporting for the last three to four years, and it's important, the way they analyze and the, the trends that the data is presented to the state every year, to try to keep it, that as consistent as possible. They have a, a total proposal for 2019, 2020 reporting year for 16,255 dollars. This is a budgeted item. We do have funds available, and we recommend approval.
So Bobby, you're saying, basically, this company's been doing it. We need consistency. There's a strong reason to remain with the same company. Is that what I'm getting from you?
Yes, and they, they really do a, I, I worked with them the first year I was here, and they're, they're outstanding. They go above and beyond to help us do what we need to do, and we're really pleased with them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve CCR Environmental to conduct the long-term water quality monitoring as mandated by the Georgia Environmental Protection Division in the amount of 16,255 dollars.
Have a motion, a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous. I'm two.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is my first time at the council meeting, so I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight. What we've got here is an opportunity for the city to participate in a program that's run through the Atlanta Regional Commission. Now, Villarica is actually a part of the Three Rivers Regional Commission, not part of the ARC. But because of the changes in commutation patterns between the Atlanta region and the city of Villarica and its surrounding areas, people that live in the adjacent region that are actually traveling to Villarica for work, it actually brought us into the Atlanta Metropolitan Planning Organization. One of the benefits to that is that it allows the city of Villarica, there's only two towns in Carroll County that actually get to do this, or one of those, gives us the opportunity to participate in the Atlanta Regional Commission's Livable Centers Initiative, which is otherwise known as the LCI program. What it is basically is a planning, a, a planning and transportation program that tries to encourage place making for the city, for example, but also tries to identify opportunities to minimize road trips within the city as well as in surrounding areas. The, the great benefit of this program is that it allows the city access to federal transportation funds that it was not otherwise qualified to receive. It is a, the program itself has been available, or been around since, at least for the last 15 years, and a number of cities and jurisdictions throughout the metropolitan region have benefited from it. The way that the program works is that the city applies for a, a grant for a planning study, which is a micro study similar to your comprehensive plan, but it's on a much smaller detailed level, and identifies projects within the plan that are later applied for, for implementation. There is a, there was a 20% match to the grant that's committed by the city, but 80% of the project cost, including the plan itself, but also implementation of projects in the future, are paid by the federal government through the ARC at 80%, which is an outstanding way to leverage the city's financial resources to pay for things that would otherwise go to pay for infrastructure projects. So what we have here this evening is a request for a commitment from the city council for a 20% match of the total project costs, which are estimated at 96,000 dollars. The city's 20% would be 20,000 dollars. That would get us into the program, should we be selected to participate. So this is really kind of contingent request that the, the 20,000 dollar match or 20% match would only be obligated if we were actually selected to participate. But it gives us the opportunity to at least engage in the process, and I think we have a really good chance to be selected for this program, and it's, it's a really outstanding opportunity for the city of Villarica. And I've actually been responsible over the last 15 years for managing four other LCI programs for other cities. The city of Hayville had two, the city of Shambly had one, and the city of East Point also had one. And it's, it's a great program, and it's a great benefit to the local jurisdiction, a good way for the, to provide additional benefits to the public at greatly reduced cost. Now, we just close by saying, some of the things that the study may identify for projects for implementation would be downtown streetscapes, would be, we have a downtown master plan that was done by Wood-
Carl Vin, Carl Vinson did the-
Carl Vinson, okay.
Did the RSVP.
And also the Golden Nugget Trail System, which circulates the entire city. We've established the boundaries for the proposed LCI to include pretty much 75% of the whole trail system. So that would be an opportunity for funding that really kind of fits in with the narrative of what ARC funds through this, through this program. So I think it's a great opportunity, and I certainly encourage the city council to support this initiative.
Questions for staff?
What criteria did you use to select this area for, for the LCI program?
Can you rephrase the question? I'm a little confused on it.
I'm sorry. I guess, different areas of the city, but your proposal is for the LCI to be in this kind of northeast region on the Carroll County side. Any particular criteria used, or?
Well, the LCIs like to focus on the town center areas. There, there are LCI districts of variety of sizes. I, I did one for Hayville, which was in the entire city, but of course that was two square miles for the town. The reason we selected these boundaries here is because there's not a lot of interconnectivity in the city to the industrial areas of the town, but also did not want to encroach into areas that already had existing pedestrian trail facilities like Mirror Lake, for example. Really wanted to focus on the downtown area. And also, as I mentioned, 75% of the trails, the proposed trail system identified in the comp plan are also in this proposed study area.
Thank you.
Chris, just a couple of questions. This doesn't link us into ARC, Atlanta Regional Commission, in any other way, right?
No, ma'am.
We, we can deal in this area, but they don't have any authority to mess with us otherwise, because we're in Three Rivers, right?
Correct, yes.
It's federal funds coming, obviously, we've got a lot of places we can use it, whether it's the downtown Golden Nugget. Do they have, because it's federal funds, I know a lot of times they come with strong strings. Do they have say-so about how and where we use it, or if it were used on the Golden Nugget, what's allowed to be on the Golden Nugget Trail, what's not allowed? Does it have-
No.
-that kind of, so we have a lot more autonomy still?
Correct. The, the study itself, the LCI study, which is the first phase of the program, identifies what projects that the city places as priorities. It doesn't prescribe any specific detail of how those are designed or what they include. So it's really up to the city to determine what the scope of the project's going to be, and then submit that. Basically, what, the way the grant works is that the city pays for the project and then submits for reimbursement, and it's a reimbursement grant of 80% of the project cost. So as those projects move forward, and if they're phased, or if they're, if there's like a monthly expenditure or something like that, once we pay the bill, we submit that to ARC, and ARC turns it around and pays us back. There, there's really, in my experience, very, very, very little involvement from the ARC, other than just in the financial transaction of the federal funds.
So from them, and from the federal level, because it's going through them, so if there were strings attached, it would come through ARC?
If, if there were, but again, in my, in my past experience with all these other LCI study areas, that's, that's never been an issue, and they really don't get involved in the details of-
Okay, okay.
-project implementation.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, I have a question for you. These funds that would come from ARC, are they paid by ARC members?
No, they're not. These are actually, these are federal transportation dollars that I guess come from the Department of Transportation on the, on the federal level.
So all, all funding would come from the federal government, not from any-
Yes, correct.
-county that's in the ARC?
Correct.
Except the match.
Except for the match with, which is paid for by the city.
Right.
Yes, correct.
Any, any other questions for staff? Okay. I would entertain a motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no motion, we will move forward to I, tab E. Item one. I didn't hear a motion?
Okay, hang on, hang on.
Okay. I make a motion to approve a resolution in support of the city's Livable Centers Initiative, which is the LCI study grant application, and to affirm its commitment to fund 20% of the projected cost, should the city be selected for funding.
Have a motion. Do I hear a second? Have a motion, a second. I'd like to make a statement. Forty percent of our population lives in Douglas County, which is in the ARC. Sixty percent of our population lives in Carroll County, which is part of the Three Rivers Commission. I am not in favor personally. I don't vote, but I am not in favor of being a part of ARC. There are restrictions that they place on things, and it's hard for me to believe that, that being a part of an ARC grant would not endet us, or at least lead us in the direction. I know you came from cities and counties that were in the ARC. You're not in one now. So the, the downtown area of Villarica is in the Three Rivers Commission District, so that's just a comment. I would urge the council to think and vote wisely.
That's why I asked those questions. I was a little concerned about just making sure that it, it didn't attach us in some sort of way. You want?
We, we applied for an LCI grant in Faribault before I arrived. We did the study, I want to say in 2008. I got there in '11. And we had not applied for implementation, so we updated the study maybe in '12 and applied for implementation money. At that point, it was exclusively a process between the city staff and the engineer. No ARC intervention whatsoever. I've gone to see implemented LCI projects. Norcross comes to mind. They've done gorgeous streetscape and all kinds of stuff, but the mindset behind this program is a blatant anti-vehicle, pro-pedestrian, pro-bicycle position. When you think about this, it's a metro Atlanta program, right? And that's, so that's what ARC is after, public transportation, pedestrian-friendly transit, bicycle lanes, and all that kind of stuff.
Mission control.
Oh, yeah. All right, Vicki, go.
I would add one other thing as relates to this. The city of Villarica, part of the city sits in what is the Atlanta Regional Commission's Transportation District. Other parts of the city do not. Now, I didn't see what they, this area that they applied for, but I certainly will tell you that even as we're seeking funding for- you that even as we're seeking funding for our trail on other programs, we are, depending on where we are, we are automatically pushed to apply to the ARC as opposed to what would be the state transportation improvement. So there's not a whole lot of ways that we're going to avoid, depending on what part of the city it falls within, avoid if we ever want to seek any type of transportation funding going through ARC. And I say that because I spent a good part of last year coming to you guys and reporting to you on training that was mandated, things that we had to go through, just in order for us to be able to apply for federal funds. And again, just depending on where they happen to be located in the city, it will automatically make the city have to apply to ARC for those federal funds, as opposed to applying through the state, through maybe in other sections of the city. So I certainly would throw that out to you, just so that you have an understanding that some things, there's no way we're going to be able to avoid if it's transportation-related, even though there are some other programs that they have that we are completely exempted from. So it will come up again. I at least want to throw that out to you.
Initially, I was inclined to not support this. However, I'm going to reconsider that with the consideration that when a project does get put together, that it looks like what you're describing here, that it is part of the downtown, and it is part of some of those type projects that I would support. That's all I'll say.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor? All opposed? Was that a four?
That was a four.
Unanimous. Tab E.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am here to present for you all to potentially approve the Headlining Act contract agreement with Wet Willie, for them to perform at the June 15, 2019 summer concert to be held Saturday, June 15, at the Mill Amphitheater. The Main Street Board unanimously voted for Wet Willie to perform in a summer concert in January, and this item was tabled, I believe, two meetings ago. Staff is recommending that Wet Willie headline the June 15 summer concert. This is a budgeted item. The amount is $8,500 for them to perform.
Questions for staff?
Does the $8,500 include, that's a band, does it include everything encompassing as far as hotel rooms, meals, staff, sound lights, that sort of thing?
We provide the hotel room. They ask for it in their contract, and we provide, so I think we're providing seven.
Seven, I think.
Yeah.
Sound and lighting's extra, too.
So Tom, my question is, going down the road as we, because we're going to go back into budget season, we're going to be looking at all this, is if we could get a true cost, because I don't really know what this event is costing. I know what the band is costing, rooms, but how can we get a true cost that has all of this, so we really know what we're paying for these events?
Yeah, that, I asked Sarah to try to put together a projected expense budget for this $90,000, which is your last item in the backup now. And if you look at that, the estimated totals for this year are shown there with a sort of arbitrary allocation of sound and lighting. I don't know, did you?
Jen and I worked on it. We estimated it.
Yes.
Okay, so we.
So hotel rooms are on there, Tom, and sound and lighting?
We haven't done the sound and lighting contract yet, and we, and so that orbit, that amount and allocation is based on last year, but what we're projecting now is to spend $80,000 of the $90,000.
But after you put together this spreadsheet, when you run the totals out, you're still under budget, even with all the projections.
Right.
So, okay, let me, so we can get a motion, and then we can have a discussion if we want to. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the contract agreement necessary to engage Wet Willie as the headlining band for the June 15, 2019 summer concert in the amount of $8,500.
Second.
With a motion and a second, discussion?
Yeah, I've kind of been the point person that's concerned about the expense that we're spending on entertainment. So I won't repeat what I did a couple of weeks ago. I won't waste your time on that, but I want us to think about a couple of things as we move forward. I went ahead and did a little research, because I think we need to be careful with the narrative that we're competing. We're competing with these other cities. So I checked on Dallas to see what they're doing, and I know they have a 5K in March. They're having Caleb Lee Hutchett send the, I think he was runner-up in the American Idol, for which they charge $10 a ticket. They also do Food Truck Fridays. I checked with Douglasville. They do Food Truck Mondays. They have a 5K. They have an Ice Cream Social downtown in July, and then they, in December, parade and tree lighting. This is everything I could find on their website, checking their Main Street. I think Carrollton is our sister city. They're probably, if we want to consider competition, I don't want to use that term because personally, I think we've made a deal so that we try not to have our events on the same night, which makes sense. If they're having a big event, we're having a big event, we'd like to have a really good turnout, so let's try to make sure we don't have them on the same time. As we start to do this for the budget and decide how we're going to do this going forward, I want to mention a few things I learned from Carrollton, and I hope this will be helpful as we step back and look at this holistically. They do six regional acts. We do two. Those are our big ones, right? Those are what we consider our big ones. They, two of those are covered, sponsorship. On all their other big acts, it is their goal to raise half of the money through sponsorship. They fund all of those regional acts through the unrestricted hotel motel tax. They do not go to their general fund. They are not, and this may sound a little biased, they're not robbing their general fund to do it, okay? They've got more hotels and motels than we do, and so I'm sure it's much more generous than what we have. Their goal is to raise half the cost in sponsorships. All their smaller acts, which are $2,000, are totally covered in sponsorship. Andy says they basically buy the snacks and water. So what I'm saying is, it's really hard if we want to say competition. We have a leaky roof, and we have cracks in our foundation, but our neighbors can have a Mercedes-Benz. We may look over and go, I want some of that, and I want the benefits of that Mercedes-Benz, and the bells and whistles, but we're going to have to think going forward if that's going to be our priority financially. And let me just tell you this, the money's flowing in in Carrollton. I talked to a city council person that's a friend of mine, budget, budget surplus, and I'm just going to read you two quotes, and I'm going to be quiet. And then I just hope that just some of this information of what our sister city is doing, how they're doing it, we could replicate maybe getting some of that sponsorship. This is from Tim Grizzard. "We have water and wastewater system that has won numerous awards and that is so financially successful that it funds much of our general fund. We have a sanitation department that makes a profit and funds our road paving and sidewalks while providing excellent service. So I just want to be careful about competing, and yet, I do think there's some things we can learn from the communities around us when we do this coming budget year."
Thank you, ma'am. Other comments?
So I think it could be a little bit misleading to suggest in any way that anybody else is not concerned with the spending. But I also called Carrollton, and I heard some of that same stuff that you heard. What I would point out here is that when we go through the budget process, and we come up with the amount of money for each of these departments, we speak with these departments, I mean, ad nauseam sometimes, about where that money is going to come from. So in our budget, we budgeted $112,000 for hotel motel tax, and then we put $90,000 in for this particular program at Main Street. We're coming in way above out of that hotel motel money. You can tell by the financial report that Sarah gave us a few minutes ago. So we are not prioritizing what we're doing over here over any needs in the city. And I think it's a false argument to believe that that's what's happening, because it's not. The fact is, we are doing a lot of healthy things financially for this city to put us on the right track. And if you just listen to the financial report we had when this meeting started tonight, you see that that is true. We're starting to see it, the results of our work and some of the hard things that we did. So I think it, if anybody has the idea that we are prioritizing this over any needs, get that out of your head. That's not what's happening. And a lot of this money, there is unrestricted money as part of this hotel motel tax, but some of this money absolutely must be spent on product development and CBB, which is the Visitors Bureau. So I think when you really, if you're at the budget meetings and you want to know where these numbers come from, sit through those things for hours. Find out how we put that together. Find out how we decided to give them $90,000 in that budget. And I think somebody made a comment earlier, and there were a number of good comments, and I'll say the same thing I said two weeks ago. I appreciate everybody getting up and speaking when you do. Oftentimes, we're enlightened by that information, but somebody hit the nail on the head. I have long said, and it has long been known, that this council is not to micromanage the staff. So we either choose for them to do the work, or we do it. And I don't think we have that option. Anyway, I think Dave Mecklen might intervene there if we started doing that work. So that's all I'm going to say. I just don't want there to be this false narrative out there that somehow we have prioritized what we do over here at this amphitheater over the needs of the city, because that's not what's happening.
I would just mention that if it is coming out of the general fund, it is money that could go elsewhere, and I think we need to prioritize sponsorship. And I think we, because we answer to the citizens, have to know those numbers, and there were, I feel like we didn't talk ad nauseam that we did need additional information. There's some questions I wish I would have asked that I didn't know to ask as to how much more we would spend on certain things. But I think it's a learning thing for us, and that's why I want us to look at all these factors as we move forward and do the budget. We'll have a better idea of questions we want to ask, but I do think we need to prioritize sponsorship and see what we can do in that area so less of it comes out of the general budget, because it's still a significant amount coming out of the general budget. That money can be spent elsewhere. I'm not saying not to have stuff. I want us to have things there. It's just like, you know, in your family, it's just like you do with your family budget. You know, sometimes it's not quite as nice of a restaurant or whatever, but you can have nice things.
And just to echo both council members' points, I appreciate everybody's comments and everybody's input in the process, and I encourage you to be there when we start the budget process. I think the point that I've tried to make is two things. Number one, this is not about who's more responsible with money and how money's spent on infrastructure as opposed to bands, because that's not even an argument. There's none of us up here that would ever say that having bands at the amphitheater is more important than fixing infrastructure. None of us would ever say that, or even imply that, because it doesn't make any sense. What we do say, what I've said from the first time we spoke about this, is the time to discuss this is during the budget process. And if y'all will remember, I have asked the department heads and our city manager and the council to come to us with goals and objectives. And I will reiterate that, that we need goals and objectives. I want to know, just like Councilmember McPherson said, I want to know what those bands are going to cost. And if the decision is made at that point to say, you know what, we really can't afford to spend that kind of money on bands, then that's the appropriate time to do it. None of us would argue with that. The only thing, and I appreciate everything that you've said, I really do, Councilmember, but I would just say that when we come to the budget process, I hope we're all engaged, and I'm going to say me, I hope I'm more engaged this year than I've ever been before, and I've been on both sides of the aisle. I've been there as a department head and now as an elected official. So I would just say that if you get to that point where we're talking about the budget, and you don't understand, or you think we need more information, that's the time to say, you know what, I really can't vote on this because I need more information, because someone said this in public comments, we don't have a plan, we need a plan. We do have a plan, and it's called a budget, and it's a legal document that we approve every year. That's the plan for the year. And if we need to be spending more money or less money on any particular thing, that's the time to discuss it. I think we can all agree on that. So there's not division on this council, and I want to make that plain, even though it may seem that way. I think we're all conservative to a point. I think we just need to all, when we sat down and talked about this, when budget time comes around, I expect that we're going to spend a lot of time talking about individual items and budgets for departments. If we do anything other than that, then we haven't done what we should for our citizens. So that's my comments. Anybody else? Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor? All opposed? Three, one. Thank you, ma'am. Tab F. Tom?
We are now in the second year of our partially self-funded insurance, health insurance program, and are, again, looking at a service to enhance the performance of the plan and also benefit our employees. What we are presenting to you tonight is a program designed to meet multiple objectives in the event that an employee has a extremely serious high-dollar health condition. Because of how we're structured now, if we have a multi-hundred-thousand-dollar claim, whether it's an event or a condition, we only pay $50,000 out of the fund, and it's, and our exposure is capped, but our long-term cost is not capped because the company that is paying for the claim above $50,000 is providing us with umbrella coverage, and we're going to experience the consequence of that in the following renewal year. So it's in our best interest to manage the cost to the umbrella carrier because it benefits us in the long run. What this program does is help us move a high-dollar claim situation out of the program and to provide for coverage of the expenses through a combination of grants from foundations that have been established specifically to help people in a specific illness, to work with manufacturers who provide pharmaceuticals, to partner with hospital organizations and resource organizations that provide treatment for free in rare medical conditions. And this, as you might expect, is not cheap. So what we're paying for this is a fixed fee per year, and we're sharing the savings because we're not going to pay that $50,000 maximum per incident or per condition expense. So this is, this is an expensive proposition for us to save potentially extraordinary As an example, one of the people that I worked with in Faribor has since left and is now the city manager of a small town in Fulton County. They had an employee with a child whose pharmaceutical was $1,007 a year, which made their plan unaffordable. So when they came around for renewal, they got zero bids, except from their current carrier who's obligated to give them a renewal, but it was so expensive that they were going to not be able to have a plan. And they used this program approach and carved that employee out. Now they are six months into their version of what we've done, and they have 800 grand in the bank. So they've actually outperformed what we did last year. So, they've actually outperformed what we did last year, but did, have done it in six So, we're talking real money here, big, big money, and as I've, as I've said to the mayor, the approach that we're taking should, if we're successful, give us a competitive advantage when we're hiring and retaining people for years until other cities catch up with what we're doing, because our costs are at least flat, if not going down, and everybody else's costs are ratcheting 6 and 8 and 10% and more per year for health insurance. So, I, I know that there's a lot to this that we don't deal with every day, but I recommend that we take this agreement and approve it and like so much of the rest of what we've done, let's, let's see how it turns out, because we, we don't have good experience to go talk to other people for references, except in very limited cases, but I recommend that we, that we pursue this.
And Tom, one thing I would add to what you said also, and I have spent a lot of time reading over this, and Tom mentioned the fact that we believe that it will end up saving the month, the city money over the long haul, but from the standpoint of the employee who's experienced that catastrophic injury, the whole program seems to be designed towards making sure that employee is taken care of in a compassionate and as, as good of a process as can be made, so I want to make sure that not only does it benefit the city, that the program is designed to, to benefit that employee who's got the problem.
Let me say, when I was briefed on this program, that was a big part of my consideration, was the impact on the employee. I thought that that was significant, and on top of that, it saved the city money, but let me just get back to something real simple, and that is that what I was briefed on is not what I'm reading here today, and I know that in the briefing, that was briefed because of the confidential nature of this particular program, and you may not want to discuss any further here, but because this is so different from what I was briefed on, I'm, I wouldn't be prepared to vote on this tonight.
This is questions for staff, so, yeah. Any other?
I would just echo that, that thought. I thought there was, something changed on a number.
Well, it's not just that it changed on the number, it's that this is a commitment, number one, and then it's tied to a percentage, and none of these numbers add up to the number that we were initially given. Now, in fairness, Tom, you weren't in that particular briefing for me, you may have been for somebody else, but-
My understanding is that it's a fixed fee per year plus the shared savings.
That was not, that was not presented, that, to me.
No questions?
Yeah, that, that's always been my understanding, that it's a flat fee of $20,000 plus a percentage of the savings, so if that's not what you were told, then that's what the contract has always been.
Yeah, that's, that's not the number.
I'll, I'll make a motion, we'll let this sort out on the council on its own. I'm gonna make a motion to table this to the April 9 meeting.
I'm gonna second that mainly because I am comfortable with it, but if I were in your position, I would want somebody to give me more time, because I want us all to be on the same page, and we weren't getting briefed at the same time, so I think it's important that we all know the same thing, so I would want that same benefit, so I'll, I'll second tabling this.
Okay, so we'll have a motion and a second to table this to the April 9 meeting. Any discussion?
So, discussion, thank you. Let me ask you this, Tom, is this something that, and maybe David, you'd weigh in on this, is there a way for us to evaluate this in some sort of a recess? And Tom, do you need this tonight? Can you wait till the April 9 meeting?
Sarah, I would say no, that we can table it and we're okay, Stephanie. You, you agree?
Yeah, we, we think that it's okay to go tonight.
Okay. So, my motion, stand.
Okay, a motion and a second to table, any further discussion? Not all in favor of the motion? One, two, three, four, it is unanimous. Tab G.
Pass those down.
I have engaged in a project over the last couple of weeks that is far from complete, but I want to show you the structure of what I'm trying to compile so that we can use this as we get into the next budget cycle. What I am attempting to do is to take the project list for construction items to identify what I consider the primary funding source for each project, and then for us to spend the time to prioritize each set of projects for each funding source. One of the things that has come up over and over since I've been here, and it started before I got here, is the idea of buckets, separate buckets, and it's, it's what got us in trouble when we were taking money out of the general fund to pay water and sewer expenses and sanitation expenses, because what, what that does is two things that I see more clearly now than anywhere I've ever worked. When you subsidize a utility out of the general fund, you only subsidize it to a minimal level, which means that you don't, you not only don't make capital improvements in the utility, but you don't even do maintenance. All you do is just keep it afloat, and the second thing it does is because you're taking the money out of the general fund, you do the same thing in the general fund, so you don't have the money for capital improvements there, and you probably don't do any maintenance there either, and there's the story of Villarica. So, what I'm proposing, and this is gonna be painful, is that we take these projects this summer, and for each primary funding source, we have a knock-down, drag-out argument about what order they're gonna get funded in within each funding group. So, for the general fund, literally, for the, for the general fund group, we would prioritize those six projects. For Carol Sploes, we're gonna have that conversation every year anyway. Douglas Sploes, we're gonna have that conversation. We're gonna need to start talking about a GO bond at some point, because we've got park expenses, for instance, the Goldust Master Plan, that cannot come out of Sploes or the general fund, it's just too large. A future city hall, a potential future public works building, if we reuse the space that the Avante Building is on, downtown parking deck that we've talked about. Then we get to the Tads, and we're gonna have to talk about those. I ain't even started talking about water and sewer yet, so water and sewer's gonna be the same way. There are things that, that Pete has identified that, that we need to do, would like to do, that we may not be able to do, and I end this with, the only good news in the deal, which is at least we don't have to worry about where the GDOT project money comes from, because Georgia DOT's paying for all those, but you can see that there's six potential GDOT projects in Villarica. So, I'm, I'm a long way from this being a finished document, I've got lots of cost estimates to work on, but I wanted you to see sort of this, what structure that I'm proposing, so that when we get into this summer, we can make some decisions and add a column for the year in which we think the funding for the source would be available for each project, and I think once we've done that, we'll be motivated to operate in a different way, because we're gonna have to go find money beyond what we currently are generating to fix what we want to fix, whether it's roads or water and sewer, or whatever, buildings. So, that's my update for tonight, I feel, I think that's enough bad news for one night.
Tom, I appreciate you putting all the effort into this, because, and you, you've cautioned me against using this analogy, but, you know, for a long time, we've been a boat in a big ocean without a map, and, without a rowboat, and without a paddle, and we had one paddle at times, and so, if nothing else, now we're beginning to put together a picture of what we have out there, what all these needs are, and what wants are, and so that the council and the public can, can help prioritize those, and we've got, you know, money figures and how we're gonna plug all those in, and something that you've said to me, and I've, I've repeated many, many times, is we can't tax ourself out of this, we can't increase fees and get ourself out of this, we have to grow out of these problems, and that's important for us all to remember as we move forward, but, but thank you for all, this is a lot of work. I put together plans like this, this is a very in-depth document, and I, I haven't even sorted through it yet, but thank you for putting this together.
Any questions for Tom? Okay, I don't think we have an agenda in a executive session, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor? We're adjourned.